Good evening, everybody. The time is 6 o'clock on November 12th, 2020. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader City Council. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Mike Parsons.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
Mayor Shuck.
Here. Everyone is here. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Parsons, will you do that on there?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mayor's report. The Little Falls loot distributions are continuing. There aren't, from what I've heard, there aren't a whole lot of vouchers left to hand out. Diane, do you know how close we are on those?
We've given out 17,400.
17,400 of the 20,000 that we allocated. So, pretty exciting that all those folks got to get that, got those vouchers. The deadline to use those is the end of November. And then, of course, then businesses need to turn in their reimbursement through the middle of December. Is that correct, Diane?
They have until December 5th, I think it is.
Fourth or fifth. Fourth or fifth, alright, so the first week of December then.
Yeah.
So hopefully people will get, stay up to date on that. Wastewater treatment update. Civil West will address the council at our December 10th council meeting prior to the bidding process. They'll have all the updates for us at that time, but we're still on track. Updated development regulations that the planning committee was working on and that the city council saw at the last meeting, they were sent to Department of Commerce for review. Those will be coming to council for your consideration once the review periods have completed. The planning committee is having a public hearing on them at their next meeting on November 19th. German Auto has been granted their occupancy permit after successful inspection. So, it's quite monumental for the city and for German Auto. They've been working on that project for years. And so, congratulations to them. They are still working with county on some water issues, but as far as the city's concerned, they're in good shape. Public hearing, land use and planning committee on November 19th, I just mentioned that. Future budget public hearings on November 12th, which is today, there'll be a public hearing on the preliminary budget. And then also December 3rd, there'll be a public hearing on the final proposed budget. Council reports. Council have anything to report?
We are, I don't know if I can see it in here, so we are taking donations for the food baskets and for Thanksgiving, starting now at the cafe. And you can also write down names of families that are in need and we will try to give them a basket too. We have signup forms down there at both the cafe and at the J&amp;G's, so.
Great, it's a great way to give back to the community. Any other council reports? Okay, moving on to agenda approval. I do not have any changes to the agenda. Diane?
We discovered an error in our vouchers and they're actually only 50,733.45 instead of 67.
Okay. Can you repeat that number?
Yes, 5-0-7-3-3-4-5.
Were those the numbers that were on the sheets over there? So the agenda was...
This is the corrected sheet.
Okay, so the vouchers were correct, but the agenda was incorrect. Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for November 12th, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with the modified voucher amount. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes on 10/22/2020, as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the city council meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the 1st of November at $50,000, or $50,733.45.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers with the updated amount of $50,733.45. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Fraz.
Good evening. The October law enforcement activity report in the city of Vader, we had a total of 34 service calls. 28 of them happened when no one was dedicated to the city of Vader, 6 of them while we actually had someone that was 100% dedicated to Vader. During that month, there were, among other things, 3 misdemeanor arrests, 2 of them were for order violations and 1 for assault or, sorry, assault or domestic violence. Any questions?
Traffic stops.
Oh, okay, thank you. There were a total of 19 traffic stops and with 8 infractions issued.
How did Halloween go?
It was not bad. A whole lot of people out and about, as compared with other days. We've had some with some of the weather. There have been some days when no one's been around, but it was good from the deputy I talked to.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, I saw you guys out and about, so thank you for being here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to city business. Item number 1, the public hearing for the 2021 preliminary budget. As usual, we need a motion to open for a particular amount of time and we'll vote, have the public hearing, and then we'll have a motion to close.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the 2021 preliminary budget.
You have a, do we have a particular amount of time?
10, I'll say 10 minutes.
Or as needed.
Yeah, or as needed.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to open the 2021 preliminary budget hearing for 10 minutes or as needed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I open this public hearing for the 2021 preliminary budget at 6:09 PM. This is an opportunity to hear from the public on our, the budget as it stands right now and any input they have on suggestions for changes or ways to spend our overage, our excess amount, which is great that we have this year. Keep in mind that this budget does change as we get closer to the end of the year, as we pay bills, as expenses come and go. This budget does change slightly and so bear in mind that we need to be flexible on that. So, that said, I'll turn this over to the public.
Are you gonna have her explain the differences?
Please ask your, please ask your question to Diane.
Yes.
And that microphone isn't working right now, so just speak up so everyone online can hear.
Okay. So I did present to you with version 4 of our budget. And the major changes that I thought were important to put on there is we just got 30 minutes actually before the meeting, the report from Lewis County about our tax levy and what's gonna, we're gonna be able to tax. So I adjusted that figure down to reflect that. Which number is that? The very first number on expenditures, I'm sorry, revenues. That went down or up? Down. Because what they had, they did is they applied the state's estimated utility costs, I think is what they call it, and they adjusted that figure. So, I looked at last year's and the ones before and it's, it's a pretty comfortable process, but we are getting more taxes than we did before. We will be. So the number, the projected is lower, it went down? From what I projected before. Okay, so the 59, is that the number you're talking about? That's the current one, yes. So that, what was that before? I don't have mine. 64, I think? 68,575, there you go. Anything else? The expenditure side, I just paid bills yesterday, so I put all of the new amounts of there. There are some changes in the sewer because we've been doing a study of the expenses of the sewer. And so, some of those costs have changed. Some of the projected income has, I'm not sure if there were major changes, but it was just updating the figures. The fun? The fun overview that it had to this one has not changed. I don't have... That was on the website. I have copies if you want. What changed on this one? The one you have there? Yeah. Did something in the sewer change on that? There were several items, I can't remember exactly. Okay, this one? But, you know, for purposes of tonight, just so you know that, you can still use the figures that we had before. Okay. Cause I have a question. Okay. Does the council allow this to participate?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we don't wanna overshadow whatever the public has to say, but...
If the public finishes, I have questions on this too.
But yeah.
I'll just wait till we're done.
Yeah, and we'll, and we will have time afterwards, obviously. Item number 2 on the, on the agenda is to discuss this too. And also, don't forget that there is a workshop coming up later on in the, next meeting? Next meeting? Meeting after next?
I do not think so.
Oh, did that get removed from the latest one too? Maybe that was the previous schedule.
So there is no workshop?
Well, this is the workshop slash hearing.
Okay.
What would be different?
And we're gonna have another one on the 3rd, right? Public hearing.
Another public hearing.
If we feel like we need a workshop, we could add that on, we could meet an hour earlier or something for the next council meeting. But anyway, back to public.
So I have an appointment, did, are we gonna get raises?
Yeah, there are raises built into that.
I looked back at a couple of the meetings, I don't remember that coming up. Did I just miss the meeting that you guys voted on that?
No, it's not, the council doesn't, it's, it's part of the salary schedule. So, the council, several years ago, voted on this salary schedule. And every year, there's a certain amount of raise that's, that's built into the budget. And then when council approves the budget, they are in effect approving the raises.
Raises, okay. So apparently the council thinks it's feasible to give raises in the middle of a pandemic when people are losing their jobs and houses. That's feasible? That's responsible?
The government, our, our budget is stable and we can maintain that for our employees.
Didn't last time somebody say that we're gonna be losing mine in the next year or two?
It, the...
We're gonna keep giving them.
The tax revenue is gonna go down slightly, but once again, our, we still have plenty of, you know, bandwidth in our budget to support it without making an impact.
On this salary schedule, we are also looking at possibility of having another employee next year that is on there. That equals to...
Is that the Weimark kid?
Yeah, that would be $26,000 for part-time employee.
Is that that, the one person that's out of?
Yeah, he's working temporary right now and this would start January and he would be working public works and sewer operator task.
And if, and if...
We're considering that.
And if, yeah, and if not him, then it's still somebody, not just, not just him.
Okay. You have an aggressive amount of money for road and street maintenance of $750. Could we need to do more than 2 loads of gravel? And which line are you looking at? There's no numbers on this.
Page 3, first line.
We have, apparently, extra money to raise it, maybe we could do some type of streets?
Right, so one of the things that council, it was in the mayor's letter to council, there, we do have, we do have money available above our 2-month goal of expenses, right? Every, every year, we try to have at least 1 month, if not 2 months of expenses not allocated, right? So that, you know, what makes the auditors look happy and everything like that. So, but we have money above and beyond that. And so, it's up to council to decide how they want to distribute that within the budget. So, for instance, roads would be a great place to put it, parks could be a great place to put it, building maintenance could be a great place to put it. You know, it's, it's up to council where they wanna, where they wanna put this money.
And right underneath it is the road maintenance supplies at $20,000.
But we, that would come, the last couple of years? That would come from STP funds that are available through the county.
Yeah, we have that money available right now.
But we haven't used it.
Right, so it builds, so the STP funds builds each year and so that's where we're at right now. The last time we used STP funds is when we paved 10th Street. And so, it's built up to that amount again. And so, this would be a great year to, to utilize it.
What's your plan?
We don't have a plan.
Okay.
It was a list.
We have a road maintenance schedule.
We do have a street plan.
Well, yeah, there is, there is a street plan, but there is no active plan to expend that money. But obviously, it's there and the council could do that at any time. And when we paved 10th, it was roughly $20,000 to pave 1,000 feet.
Of 10th Street?
Mm-hmm.
Do we even like the people that owns 10th Street?
Yes, we do.
And I hear the 10th, the folks on 10th Street like their road.
That's a sound thing of driveway width, because you can't get 2 cars going without going off into the trees.
But no, that is there and it's, it's available.
Okay.
And we can use that for, I've come from with the county, we can use that for streets, we can use that for stormwater system, anything like that we can use it for. It's your gas tax at work.
Is that what the, the stormwater stuff that we're doing around town is gonna come out?
We, we could use that. It's up to the council to decide where they want that money to come from, but...
What is it that we, no excuses. Go ahead, Cindy, I just was wondering what we're doing with the stormwater thing. Go ahead, sorry.
You have $130 under a building permit state entity, that's an individual amount of money that you collect for the state.
$6.50 for each permit.
Right, I don't see it under expenditures, I probably just missed it, I just don't see it, where you actually give that to the state. Is that...
If it's not there, it's an oversight, I'll make sure it's there.
So that is something that goes out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright.
Was it, what was it again? Street permit?
On the very first page, it's called BP State Entity, that's a individual amount of money that they collect on the building permits. And generally, you take it, well, the city takes it in and then it's, I thought it went to the state.
It does.
So... Did you, did you see what that was?
No.
On the first page?
Under expenditures, right?
No, it's under revenues.
Oh.
It's under revenues, it's not under expenditures. Okay, so I just didn't know if it actually went out or was supposed to go out. So, what part of this budget is actually for the average person that lives in the city? I know you have $1,000 for 4th of July, or no, $500, I'm sorry, $500 for, wait, no, $1,000, hold on. Oh, $500 for 4th of July, nothing for special event. What do you got in here for the, you know, all the rest of us people that live here?
Everything on here is for everybody that lives here.
No, not really.
There's streets, there's sewers, there's...
You're not doing anything with the streets, you got $750 in there. You might spend $20,000 maybe on 10 feet of 10th Street, but, you know, you don't have anything that really helps. I mean, you've got that thing for the park, you've got that big thing that you guys are gonna do, that swings or whatever for the park. That, that benefits 1/10 of the population. Most of us are old. So 1/10 of the population between 5 and 12 will benefit from that lovely thing that you guys are gonna put in, in the park. But what are you doing for the rest of us?
What would you like us to do, Cindy?
I would like to have some kind of celebration. It's like a...
Well, it's kinda hard to plan a celebration in the year that you're not even, can't even have a celebration.
Well, we planned it last year. Could you at least put something in there that, so if maybe is allowed that you do something for them? Could you, maybe for a little bit more in the street, because $750 is 2 loads of gravel. And could you maybe plan to say, we're gonna, I don't know if we can term it, we're gonna pass holes. We're going to bring in some gravel so maybe people can do some of their driveways. You know...
You know, a lot of that stuff is stuff that you can come and bring to the city council and we can say, okay, let's, let's do that, we'll set up a time and we'll allocate the money for that.
Why doesn't it... Plan that? Right?
For, for hole planning?
Well, for any kind of plan. This is when you actually decide what you're gonna spend your money on. Right? Isn't this one you, what you're saying over...
In the broad general sense and the, and the, you know, the, the city expenditures that we can foresee, but, I mean, I know we're gonna have to patching holes at some time, but we, we do that every year as it is.
Well, if you look at what we've done this year, the $827 in road, road maintenance. $827.34. Unless I'm missing it someplace else.
Two years ago, we had how many streets? Chip seals and things like that, so, I mean, a lot of the terrible streets got taken care of then, so...
We'll probably get a, I put in an app, grant application for, for that again this year, this, this coming spring and summer, so we'll probably get it again.
For streets? Caving or just gravel or...
Chip seal.
Alright.
One thing I was gonna say that, which doesn't appear under the road maintenance fund, is that we bought attachments for the tractor and John is able to go over gravel streets and basically level them, which has reduced the amount that we've had to pay for gravel because we haven't had to add any, we've just been able to make it level.
And then the state's been donating the, the gravel down the super plant for, that they sweep off the roads and stuff for...
Yeah, and so that's caught, that has actually reduced our expenses a lot, not having to just keep buying gravel. And you're right, I think we should, we have bought 2 loads.
2 loads of gravel?
Yeah, that's all we needed, but the streets have been taken care of. And right now, because when the rainy season starts, this is where we're gonna have to do cold patch and start patchings. From now till the end of the year, I'm sure we're gonna be spending more money for that.
And I'd like to see, you asked me what I wanted to see.
Yeah.
I'd like to see something more down with McMurphy Park. A lot of people use it, I don't, but a lot of people in town really like going down there when it's warm. And you haven't done really anything down there. I know that some fool put the tables that you had into the crib. Hopefully, he's died. But you could maybe put some money into that where they can't move the table. Cause it wouldn't be nice not to have to sit on the ground if you wanted to have a picnic. Or maybe you could have some bark dust. I mean, I don't know, there's gotta be something more we can do for that park that people actually use as opposed to...
I went down here recently, they do have the tables now like changed to the, to the...
How about some pads or...
Pads?
No, they're anchored, no, they're just anchored, they're anchored to the ground. There's these, there are these large stakes that got put into the ground so that they couldn't just easily move.
How many do you have?
I didn't count, I just walked around the park a few times, yeah.
A couple? Well, that, that would be something that would be nice to see improved as opposed to all the money going towards, what's that? Worden, Worden Park.
The park board, I know this is a little off topic, the park board does, does have some grand plans for McMurphy, but, you know, all they're focused right now, they only have so much bandwidth and so they're focused on Worden right now.
Well, you only have 500 bucks and, but that's why I brought it up, because that would be something to spend money on besides... I mean, you, you honestly, you guys, you don't listen when we say it anyway. I mean, how many years have we been coming to these miserable places? And we say we'd like the roads fixed and we'd like the parks, you know, so everybody can use them and we'd like this and we don't spend so much money on attorneys. You never do it, it's always the same.
We're doing the park right now and you're griping about us doing the park right now.
We're 1/10 and you're using every bit of our savings to do it. 1/10 of the population, 1/10. I called the school and I asked them, how many people do we have in this town between 5 and 12? They told me it's 1/10, it's less than 1/10 of our population. That's great that you're building something over there, but you're using every bit of our savings to do it. And you, it took us a decade to get it. And I understand that you dedicated that for parks, but 100% of it's going for a small segment of the population. The rest of us old fools are sitting around here and don't have, can't hardly use McMurphy because there's what, 2 tables down there? And they may or may not be pulled out of the dirt in order to...
You don't care, you don't go down there anyway.
Well, I don't, cause I don't care for that.
So you complain, you complain about things that don't even matter to you, that's what's so frustrating.
Sadly, I'm not the only one in this city. There are 600 something people in the city that use it.
I know, and a lot of people are gonna really like that park down there.
1/10. Well, I mean, honestly, you have kids? No. You have small children? Nope.
Do you have grandkids?
You're absolutely wrong, I go down there, there's adults that go down there too.
You're gonna swing all those swings?
I didn't, you say it, swings, you say you go down and enjoy the nature of the park.
I just swing all them. But I'm just saying, there ought to be something in here for fun.
Your numbers are 1/10, you pull that out of a hat.
I did not pull it out of the hat, Randy, I called the school.
Well, you, you call how many children? And you're, and you're making assumptions, that's not true.
Folks, we're a little, we're a little off topic here.
It's not just children.
Have you read the, the park board improvement plan? It says it's for children between 5 and 12. That's where I got that information?
That's for the equipment, not to use the park.
Well, not the whole park, but that's what you're putting the money on, is the equipment, right?
There's a variety...
That adults bring children.
There's a variety of things that they're putting in. They're putting in walking paths so people can have a safe walking path area in the park all the way around. They're having the park equipment, there's extra, there's extra picnic tables and stuff, and things like that.
So for those people who have...
So there are places to hang out.
That's gonna be great. What I'm saying is there should be something else in this budget besides that.
You can go down there if you want.
And for people...
Enjoying the nature and enjoying the...
And for people that are moving into town, because we got a lot of building going on, people moving into town, it's going to be nice. Oh, they do have a park for the kids, so maybe we'll be able to get some young people in and...
Well, there is, there is money, there is money available that is not in the budget. Diane, do you know what the, roughly what the current total was? So there is money outside of the budget that isn't in there right now that the council can allocate. Originally, the very first preliminary budget was 55,000. I think you said it's moved down somewhat a little bit.
I was, I'm looking at what the current balance is and it's, one report here has 86,000 right now. Projected, we would have 89 at the end of the year. And then we continue to get money every month and we expect not to expend money for the park until we thought maybe summer. And so that's, we're looking at maybe 94,000 then.
You're talking about refunds.
I'm talking about refunds. And that's the savings that you're talking about, right?
Right, well, what were you talking about, the extra money?
Well, I was talking about the amount over our 2-month goal. That was the number that I was talking about.
Right, it pulled back 2 months of expenditures, so it is...
Right, before, in that original number that we had, it was, in the original budget that we had, it was 55,000. It's gone down somewhat right now. You know, but that, that is money that is not yet allocated in the budget. That, that the council could, in our discussions coming up, could say, we're gonna put X amount on streets, X amount on building maintenance, X amount on the jail, X amount, you know, this kind of the things. So that, that is something that still needs to be decided. And that is what the public input is for, talk about things that the public might want. You were saying a celebration of some kind, putting money towards May...
If it's allowed.
Putting money towards May Day or something like that.
Maybe or 4th of July or something that is more fun and not just, we're paying into the sewer fund and we're paying into this and we're paying into that.
So, I have a comment about the park. I don't care whether you have kids. I don't care whether you have kids or whether you don't have kids. Uh, these people that are sitting here are taxpayers and they can have an opinion about anything they choose. And um I noticed that this big park we're supposed to be putting in is only on the church property that was purchased. The jail and the rest of the property over there has not been encompassed in that little thing. So, I don't know. What's gonna happen to the jail is part of that. I mean, because all that, all the park is on the church property. It's not on the park property.
Well, that's Vader's property. It's not the church's property.
Well, it's just what you're putting it on is the land that was purchased from the church.
Yeah, the, the uh-
So, why isn't the whole park encompassed in this?
It is, actually. The grant that was submitted and that the Park Board got approved for um includes walking paths throughout the park, so all the way from one side to the other. So, continuous looping paths. It also includes um taking care of the gravel area that's against the road still in front of the, in the existing pavilion. It includes paving that and getting rid of the gravel. Um, there's standing water there in the, in the wintertime, so it adds a curb and gutter there and pavement to remove the standing water issues there. Um, it also better adds um disabled access. Um, right now, that concrete ramp that comes up, comes all the way down, it doesn't blend into the road, right? It's like a, it's a big lip, so if you actually had a wheelchair, you would be able to get up there. So, that would be blended into the road surface. So, you'd be able to go up the ramp and go anywhere in the park um on a, in a wheelchair. Also, the picnic tables that will be in there have um wheelchair access as well. And so, um access throughout the park will be improved, walking paths everywhere, um new picnic tables, pavilions, playground equipment, fence, fencing.
I almost thought it's there are three pavilions on this new park. What happened to the pavilion we have now?
It's, it's still-
I mean, it's like you guys have totally just abandoned that side of the park.
Well, here we are in the budget process right now and we have money available that we could put towards that right now. And that is part of what the city council can decide on.
Well, there doesn't seem to be a plan though. There is no plan. It just sits there. And the jail's rotted away and I uh, I got the information on the purchase of that church property. And so, you know, we've been sitting here, all of us, wondering why the jail is rotting away years and years and years, not a dime put into that jail from anywhere. And in 2014, there was $12,500 in that refund. And not one bit of it has been used for that jail. Nothing has been used for that jail.
People don't care about the jail.
You're right. It wasn't. Now, at one point, at one point, I um, I don't, I don't know if that refund money was even accessible because our comprehensive plan and the park plan wasn't updated all the way. So, some of that money may not have been, may not have been available. But-
Well, it was in there.
But once again, everything is updated. The jail is in the plan.
It was in there outside of the jail.
We have the money and if we want to put that, if we want to put money towards the jail in the budget this year, we can do it right now. Or at least when we get to the park, it's not the public hearing. Obviously, right now, this is the public hearing.
The jail needs some care immediately.
Well, let's put the money in there.
I see $25,000. Is that true or is that just a figure? And where is all this? Now, all of a sudden, there's the park RCO matching funds. Uh, is this from the refund up to $94,000? Where is that figure coming from?
Should we close with a hearing?
Wait, hold on.
Let's, we should let the public, we should let the public finish and then we, the council can go on. I know, then the council can go on and have its discussion. It'll probably be more, because we always, we always ask for public input anyway.
Carry on, Cindy. Well, I can do two others. I wanna ask them on the second floor.
Yeah, I mean, any other members of the public want to give their input on ideas for the budget and what types of things you would like to see money expended for? Obviously, roads is always a good one, building maintenance, city infrastructure.
Code enforcement costs. Is that when you have to have an inspector come and inspect a building site? You do it from another city?
It has to do with the violation of the city code and how we have to administer that. Sometimes we have to pay the, for an inspection to go have it checked out. Um, this last month, the sheriff's office has helped us a couple of times go out and help and that's been really great. Um, that's within our contracts. We don't have to pay for that. Um, but then we have to pay attorney fees to draw legal documents for that. Um, that's where all those costs are.
Kathy, are you?
Yeah.
Okay, Cindy.
You've got $2,000 for the repair and maintenance of building equipment. Could you maybe put a little bit more money in that? I mean, you know how old this building is and you know how old this jail is. Where's the $24,000 for the jail? I didn't see that.
I think that was-
Look that up.
If you had put that, it was under the REIT section, wasn't it, Diane?
It's on the third page, Cindy, at the very bottom where it says refund. Or you don't have the same line either.
No.
Refund, okay. Capital improvements, park utilities, that one?
No, it's actually refund.
Yeah, I have a refund here. It says capital improvements, park, utility installation, supplies and services?
Yes, that's what that, that line is called.
So, that $25,000 is what you're talking about for the jail?
It's a, it's a placeholder right now, but-
Do you wanna look at it?
Oh, I notice it's a lot different than mine.
Yeah, well, this is the one I had earlier and this new one, so. But I'm gonna assume that this is pretty much the same.
So, that's a placeholder. That $25,000 can be used for only capital improvements in the parks?
Well, yeah, anything that's, anything that's refunds has to be part of our capital improvement plan and part of, you know, capital improvement costs.
So, capital improvement could be used on this place?
Could be, yeah. So, it's maintaining your, it's building or maintaining um existing-
Rail property.
Yeah, so your buildings, right? You could maintain a building, you could maintain your building, do improvements to the building, maintain it, um, things like that.
So, that's not actually dedicated to the jail. It's actually just-
Not at this time, no.
Okay. So, could you use the stop or-
Yeah, and I mean, every year in the previous budgets, it, we, like, I think last year, you can see in, you can see in the numbers there, it says that we had $25,000 budgeted last year as well, but of course, we didn't spend it.
What about the year before?
I think, I think it's always, there's always been a line item in there and the money's there and we just don't spend it. So, it's always, it's always been for the parks. Ever since I've been involved, it was just being saved for the parks. Finally get their, their, their plan and their project and their grant. And so, it's just come, suddenly, it's coming to fruition this year.
Okay, so you think it might actually do something for that?
I, I think so. In fact, yeah, the Park Board is actually getting um estimates on the jail foundation right now, so.
Yeah, we only have about nine or 10 buildings left in this town that are from our heritage. And while some may not care if some of that heritage is safe, I think a lot of people here do care. And just been talking to people, they think it's worthy of saving. And people do like to see it.
Yeah, I know the Park Board is, is excited to see that fixed as well on having, getting that reopened publicly. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we'll get those estimates here and have them available for council so that in the upcoming budget discussions, council can decide if they want to allocate that amount of money towards the jail foundation.
Do we, I, do we have a loan from the sewer still?
There are loans, yes.
I thought we paid that one off there. We took that loan. When do we get another one?
There are two or three, aren't there, Diane?
You haven't got that loan for, without something, I guess, for code enforcement or something, hasn't it?
There was one that was coming due this year.
We have four right now that we're paying on. And one won't have the first payment coming out until this next year. So, if you look on page five, my expenditures, towards the bottom, uh starts with PW-04.
Yeah.
Goes that all the way through um the ECYL-190244. It's broken down into principal and interest, but those are the four loans that we have right now.
So, that was uh taken loans, were taken out of the sewer money and put into general funds or something?
No, they were used to do uh sewer projects.
Yeah, that's not, that's not that, like that one-time loan they did where they borrowed from the sewer fund for legal costs for other than, these are actual real loans that we have with state agencies.
So, we don't have any loans from the sewer uh into the general fund anymore?
No, everything's paid off. Everything's back in this fund.
When do you actually make the decisions to, I mean, these are, the general fund money you could actually use for any of the lineups in the general fund. When do you make a decision to actually do something? Like a plan, like for the roads or for the jail or for the park? Is that just on your general everyday meetings?
Yeah, so during the budget cycles, when the council would say, "Hey, let's put," you know, above, like, obviously, we have for roads, for instance, we have the STP fund sitting there. Um, that's available for roads only through, through the gas tax. Um, but if we wanted to put money in above and beyond that, the council could, could add $10,000 onto that or something right now in this budget cycle. And then sometime during next year, then the council could, you know, approve the, approve the actual road maintenance plan, whatever that might be.
Okay. Does anybody here know what they actually did for the park improvements for $1,100? Anyone know what that was for? What did they do for a little bit?
Some of it was security cameras.
Well, yeah, we got security cameras. We also had to replace some of the um the fascia around the pavilion. We had to buy lumber to get that fixed and paint um parts for different things that were repaired.
I think those stakes for the picnic tables.
All of the stakes came out of that.
So, what's the total budget, not counting the funds for the parks, about $250,000? $260,000? What do you think for a budget with, not counting the grant that you did for the-
Oh, you mean the general fund budget? I don't, I don't know what it is. You can look at the revenue, I guess.
$250,000 something. It's the total $340,000.
Right. On page two for the general fund is $225,000. For streets, it's $26,856.
Where are you getting that number? Am I missing something?
On page two, you see a total at the bottom.
That's for 2020.
Yeah. No, this is, um, I'm sorry, yes. 2020 budget's on the left. The year-to-date is in the middle. That's what I was talking about. And the proposed budget is um the one on the very end.
So, the $534 minus the $200,000 for that grant?
Yes.
Are there any other funds sitting around that you're hiring, not hiring, but you're putting somewhere as a safety thing? Like that two months of something?
Right, so the two months expenditures um is not, is not part of that, right? There is money that we have that is not, that is not spent in the budget. So, there's two months expenditures, which was roughly, that was in the original documents that we had. It was forty, forty-five. Something like forty, forty-five thousand um that's not allocated. And then plus, there was money above and beyond that that wasn't allocated to. Yeah, here it is.
Well, we're required by the state auditor to have two months expenses.
This one, please, this one's here. Two months expenditure and then the amount over our goal.
How much is it?
Two months expenditure is $43,100.
That's just the employees right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. These are not, what?
Four pages. $42,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had one, this is, these aren't stacks of the same copy.
No, that was a package.
Oh, this is a package, sorry.
So, just this number is what we're looking at, right?
This is 2020. Sorry. I had something else. Here's the 2021. Right, so-
This is looking at 2020. So, when we start 21, we will start with those funds.
Could I get a copy of that?
Yeah, this is the fund overview that you had.
It's emailed before.
Yeah, this is the one that you, we've had in the original, in the original packet we got.
Yeah.
But yeah, it says, uh, 2021 estimated ending balance is $98,000. So, at the end of the year, we'll have $98,000 sitting in the account. Um, in the, this is the general fund. Um, our two-month expenditures is $43,000 is our estimate. So, if you take the $98,000 minus the $43,000, that number is what the auditors like to see sitting there, not expended, that leaves us with $55,000 above our goal. So, if you were to think about money that's available to put into the budget in other places that's not already listed, that is the money that the council has right now, so.
That money is not included in that $250,000 budget.
Right, so these are, right, because that money has not been expended in the budget. So, it could be, the council could take that money and then put it on park improvements, put it on street improvements, whatever like that.
Did you want to pay attention or you wanted to show messages back and forth?
Just send messages back and forth.
Yeah, this is the, this is the same document the council's had before. So, again, we're still in the public hearing. Um, and we'll have, as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll, that number will get closer and closer to the final number. And the council will be able to really streamline the budget and put the money in where we want. But once again, it's a public hearing. We're here to hear ideas. We heard your ideas about um obviously more street maintenance, building maintenance, um a celebration of some sort, bumping up our, our celebration fund.
But new age five came down with the Fourth of July.
There is.
My little boss. And that city isn't involved in the Fourth of July anymore, is it? It got ruined a long time ago.
Right, yeah, right, last, last year, we didn't have Fourth of July. And um, so that money didn't get expended. No, I think in previous years, it was, I think last year was a thousand, so.
Could you put something in there for May Day? Because, you know, that's, that's pretty much our, our one holiday, one-
The council could.
Celebration.
Once again, this is for the, the community to give council their ideas, so. Okay. Any other input from the public?
I tell you not to spend so much on attorneys fees, but you haven't listened to the last four years, so I'm not gonna say it again.
It is absolutely-
What? You just put them in a position that they have to have.
It is, it's certainly on my mind on a, on a, on a daily basis when we're, when we're having those interactions and we're doing everything we can to, within reason, to keep them down. So, this last, I don't know, I'll talk about this last month, but it's certainly something we talk about all the time. All right, any other public comment on the public hearing? Uh, I'll ask one more time, any other public comment? Hearing none. Would the council care to make a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing at five, uh, 6:49 PM.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to close the public hearing on the preliminary budget for 2021. Do we have a second?
A second.
Secuted by Mr. Hall.
I have a second, bud.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed at 6:49 PM. Moving on to item number two on the council agenda. Uh, council to discuss the 2021 budget and property tax levy. So, we've, obviously, we've already started talking about that somewhat. Um, but I'll give the floor to the council to discuss. Or ask questions of Diane or myself.
Well, I have questions on my part.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
These are just numbers. This is not, the decision has not been made. You guys make the decision. I just present the numbers to you and say, "Here's what we did, here's what we might do," and here you go.
And so, I'm asking questions about the numbers. And so I'm asking questions about the numbers.
Good.
Isn't that what we're supposed to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so my question on attorney fees for the city. Year-to-date, you've got $10,316 and it's actually $22,800. Yeah, so that's a little. And you've got, let's see, 21, you've proposed 12,000.
And those are not all general attorney fees that are on her bill?
Well, this 22,800, I added up her bills. Yeah, 22,800.
Okay, part of that is grant.
Today.
Part of it is grant money that we get paid back for. Part of it has to do with planning, part of it is code enforcement. So you'll see the cost in there.
I have, I give her bills every month. I, I've never seen anything where we've gotten any money back from a grant. For what?
Yeah, we have.
A grant.
For work that she's done for the comprehensive plan, we got paid the money back for that, for work that she's done.
Well, that's the comp plan. I'm talking about all this other stuff that's going on that is. Anyway, this is an every-year thing.
You're, you're right. Jennifer Arson has been paid more than what's in that particular line item that you're looking at.
And why don't you put the truth down here?
Because her expenses are in other line items as well. That's what Diana's trying to say.
The only one I can find that you're not, unless you're just not showing that it's attorney fees, is $3,000 for the sewer. That's an estimate next year. That's the only thing I see at.
For sewer, right, for sewer projects that she might work on.
Right, so you've got somewhere around $3,000 for that. And you're saying 12,000 next year.
And again, that's just a number. You guys decide what you want to do.
It, there's no decision made. You guys just do it.
Well, no, 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 Donna, if, if, if you said, I want that number to be 5,000, and if the rest of the council agreed with you and you voted yes on it.
That's not going to happen, because we've been doing this too many years, so we already know that.
Then there it would be.
Yeah, let's just don't even go there.
So it is your vote.
These numbers are wrong and I seriously doubt.
You realize you're on the city council too, right?
Pardon?
You realize you're on the city council also, right?
Yeah, and that's why I'm complaining about this.
Okay.
I am on the city council.
Okay.
And this is my job.
Okay.
Somebody should be concerned about this. There hasn't, I haven't seen any for years from anybody on the council. It's just keep spending. So moving on, building permit inspection costs. I don't, why, Diane, I don't know, this is the one I have, it isn't so very current, we just gave, but you carry the 3,000 over here in, for 2021, proposed in red.
What, what page are you on?
Well, I'm on the second one of this one.
Okay.
I'm not, this one I had already marked and everything the other one I had.
It's about 10 below the, the insurance, 46% RMSA. It's about 10 line items below that.
Yeah, and then code enforcement and building plan review costs are.
Right. Now, the building plan review cost is what it costs us when we have an inspection done for someone who has a building permit. And so that's what we paid this year so far. We're expecting more building, so that's why I increased that amount to three.
And keep in mind that that expenditure also has an, an, a revenue line item as well.
Yeah.
Right, so, so, yes, the money comes in as revenue through building permits, and then it goes out on the expenditure sheet as an expense. So it's kind of a net gain, or a net zero for the city.
No, they don't match.
No, they don't, so, okay, well, we're, we still have some time to go here, a few more rounds. So I have another question about the repair and maintenance buildings and equipment. Year-to-date is only 456.78. We have a $2,000 budget. And you're budgeting 2,000 for 21. And that's all the money that's going to be for maintenance on the buildings and, because these buildings haven't had any maintenance for years.
And. Yeah, that's just like your general maintenance, like, you know, we have to buy the light bulbs or we have to buy something. It's not like a big, a big project. That's the capital expense for we do the big projects.
Okay, so that's strictly refunds then? Is that what you're saying?
It would be a combination of refunds and part of this budget if we needed to do a big project.
Okay, because I just, you know, the city shop needs to be painted. I was in there the other day, there's a big hole in the ceiling, I mean, that. That is just so sad that that building has never been maintained. It's so sad that nothing has ever been maintained in this community. And it seems mostly because we're held bent on this big Disneyland park up here, which is wonderful, but the rest of the city has been let go because of it.
Diane, if we wanted to say, put 8,000 on, towards a roof for city hall, what line item would we put that on?
We could put it in, in this one if you wanted, or we could use it as read money, which would be capital expenditure.
Right, if we use the general fund revenue, it would be under that line item that was just discussed.
Yeah.
So the council could bump it up from 2,000 up to 10,000.
Sure. I'm just saying, we need to start doing some maintenance on the, on the city building. It, you've got to start paying attention to the community and.
Okay, well, now's the time to make the decisions for that to happen.
But that's why I'm bringing all this up.
That's like Joe's saying, pick a number you think we need to spend and we can, we can do the budget.
Well, I think, I don't, those would take estimates, so I can't pick a number. We need to get estimates for, for that. This place probably needs to be painted, certainly.
This is vinyl, it needs to be pressure washed.
John already pressure washed it once.
So you never have to paint this building?
You shouldn't.
Just a trim.
It's composite shingles.
And it was built in 98, so it's 20, almost 20 years ago. Oh, okay.
So, okay, and then park improvements, there's only 500. So what? I'm not quite sure what all of this. What do you mean by park improvements then, for the 500?
Well, if they wanted to.
Push your bits.
For instance, barbecue, they, they bought some barbecue pits at one point down for, for McMurphy and for Worden. You know, there was. I mean, the variety of things, but that's kind of a minimum number, once again. This is where council could say, hey, we want parks to have this much more money for whatever.
Okay, so on that, I have heard that that, the swings down there are pretty dangerous.
They, they are, they are past their point of.
Should John just take those down? Can we buy a swing set for now?
We could, once again, we're hoping that this, the summer that we're going to have, we're going to have a nice set down there, so. I think the ones that we have now.
If those things are so dangerous, shouldn't John just take them down before there's another lawsuit?
We could, well, we haven't had a lawsuit on, on the swings, but.
Never knows, does one.
We could, we could certainly do some type of safety inspection to make sure that they could hand, hold up for another season. But I'm not, I'm not interested in taking them down just yet, as long as the.
Well, I meant, when you take them down, you put another set up.
Oh.
Not just take them down. There's little enough ones that play on down there that do. I think that is it, isn't it? Those pathetic little swings?
Diane, you had something to say?
The new play structure, will it replace that swing set?
Uh, that, those swing, the new, those swings will go away, and there are, there's a new set of swings that will go on the other side of the basketball court. And so the current swing area is, will be just an open field.
Well, how long is it going to be until this grant come through? And we don't even know that we're going to actually get the grant, so.
Hopefully that'll be, if all goes well, they'll, it'll be in construction in the summertime. That's the, that's the plan.
So when are you supposed to know about the grant?
Soon, I, gosh, when the RCO, when the RCO get their budget numbers? Yeah, so just another month or two.
All right. So then, the road and street maintenance supplies, what are we talking about there? I'm not quite sure. What does that mean?
That's what we were talking about earlier, that we pay for gravel, we pay for whatever.
So there's only $1,000, okay, I see what Cindy was saying now. And then you've got 20,000 from STP funds. And you're not particularly going to spend that on road maintenance, I understand?
I'd like to. I mean, we've got enough now that we can do, we can do a good section of road. We can use our street, our street plan, transportation improvement plan that was approved this last June. We could use that as a guide, or the council could pick some other types of streets.
Okay, so then the next major one I have is tractor maintenance. And when I was in the shop the other day, the tractor has a big leak underneath it. I don't know if you call it gears. John said it was the gears or transmission, whatever, and he's trying to patch that again. When is there going to be funds put away toward a new tractor?
We could do it right now.
Let's do it.
I mean, it's, once again, it's, it's up to the council.
This is, you know, it's getting to the point now where you're just throwing good money after bad. And poor John has patched that tractor, and I can't, the abuse I've seen that thing take over the years, I don't even know how it's still running.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that is.
I thought, I, I think we've been talking about that tractor.
For years.
For the last few years especially, how much maintenance it's cost and stuff.
Yeah, there was a huge puddle like that of oil underneath it, where it was leaking, and John's doing the best he can with it, but I, I just think.
A tractor like that, $40,000?
We did some pricing at the beginning of the year, looking to get a used one possibly.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, we were looking at 15,000 to 20,000 for comparable kind of tractor. New, yeah.
Crazy.
Sky's the limit.
Well, to me, that is.
And that would save.
Next to the jail, that's a serious.
Yeah, and that would save, you know, his time that he'd fix him the darn thing just to, just to use it, things like that.
Yeah, he's had, he is having some other problems with the tractor, whenever he tries to.
Is that something that we can get a grant because it's a city?
Maybe, also the, the state surplus out of Tumwater has, has stuff like that available sometimes too.
Well, it certainly worked. I've heard that said before too, but nothing's ever come of it, so I, I hope this time it's really serious.
So let's set aside, let's set aside 15,000 for a new tractor.
For a new tractor.
Let's set aside $3,000 for May Day. And go ahead and put 5 grand on the city jail.
Why would we be paying for May Day?
That's a town celebration.
Well, you always ask, I know, but why, why are, why is the taxpayer paying for it?
They shouldn't be. May Day's always been just, it's put on by, by the council.
Yeah, but not by the taxpayers.
They gave 400 when they were given for insurance.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, they bought the insurance.
We, we have, yeah, I mean, we've given, a few years ago, we gave, a couple of years in a row, we gave a pretty large sum of money for fireworks for Fourth of July. So the city has put money in to help out for different events.
And I think that, what, the cars that rolled down the hill, that.
Oh, yeah.
Event that we had.
Rather than putting money specifically for May Day, why don't we just do it for an event of some sort, rather than just allocating May Day?
Right, so right in the budget right now, it says Fourth of July, just, it's been, it's been there for several years. I think we could, we could, we could change that to say May Day, or like you said, just a general event.
And there's a line for special events.
Yeah, Donna, I wouldn't want to insert the city into May Day, because it's always been like a non-city thing.
Yeah, well, that's what ruined the Fourth of July, was getting the city involved in it, so if you want to keep May Day, better just leave it alone.
But we're not shooting fireworks.
I think we could keep a special events line, like keep that line and throw money in there versus saying this is going to May Day and then we touch it and it gets ruined.
So move them, so the, the council, they'd like to see the movie, money moved from Fourth of July to just the general special events.
Special event.
For anything that would come up, okay. Can do that.
Right, and then maybe next year the city does plan and we do an event for the city and really get people involved, which is something I think the city needs.
And a lot, and, you know, quite frankly, May Day is usually a, mostly a wet time to do an event, so, you know, the city wants to throw an event. You know, somewhere closer to summertime would be better.
I know they had a tractor parade on the Fourth of July, they had a lot of bike thing.
Well, at one time, and Guy Chastain started this, in the fall, we had an Oktoberfest. And everybody would come down to work, the whole city, and we would have corn, and people would bring food, and barbecue stuff, and that really went over big. That was really.
Donna, how long have you lived here?
Pardon?
How long have you lived here?
Thirty-three years. See, I'm one of those people that, I have lived here for 33 years. I've been here a while.
I've seen some pretty cool old cars, like a maybe old car show might be nice, if they have pretty. I've seen some at the restaurant.
Well, they used to come to the May Day every, every year, the old cars.
And actually, people in our shows, our shows are great because they actually generate.
Revenue.
Revenue.
Yeah. People coming to town, spend money.
Well, they kind of pay for themselves.
Why?
Because it's, they, they, it's a fee, anyway, off, off topic. But yeah, are we going to increase that special events from 500 to something usable? Because 500 ain't going to do anything for a special event.
So it would zero out the Fourth of July and then move it up to the special, see, it's special, it says special event donation on here.
That's where it was designed, that's how it was created before.
Right, that's, that's right, that's how the city kind of does it.
But we can change that, any of those things.
So what would the council like to see? You said 2,000?
Just, yeah, put it in a general, is that what you, is that what everybody is, for just general, for whoever wants to buy for it?
Yeah, and then, and then when we, when, when it comes up, then the council would vote to say, all right, yes, we want to spend this 2,000 on this money. Or on this, this event.
Do you have to spend the whole 2,000 or just part?
Yeah, just part of it.
I hate to see the taxpayers' fund, May Day.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's a lot of money.
What? Because it's the only event that made, that Vader is actually known to do every year.
Once again, like Fourth of July, the Fourth of July line item, right, it was, it was there all year long and never got used, and so the money's still, still there. It didn't get spent on anything, so.
Well, I, I would just, 2,000 in there, fine, but I just hate to see it all go to one. I don't want taxpayers funding the whole May Day parade. And that.
No, so we divide that up, Donna, and split it and say, we wanted 500 to go towards May Day, and then 1,000 and towards your Harvest Fest, which I love that idea, by the way. A Harvest Fest would be great for that.
It was great, and we used to, everybody used to have a big time, everybody would bring a dish, and then the city would buy the hot dogs and the buns, and Guy would furnish the corn.
Oh, it's the corn feed thing here, okay.
Well, they called it, it was like an Oktoberfest, and we did it around October or into September, whenever, yeah, and it was a big, it really went over big, and it kind of brought people in the community together, gave you a sense of community.
Last year, the Lions Club did do an Oktober event, and they had the pumpkin, they did down at McMurphy, and they set up the pumpkin chucking, chunking, trucking thing where they were launching pumpkins at targets and things like that, and the kids came. Obviously, this year it didn't happen because of, because of COVID.
This year, they had the trunk or treat out there, and it was.
I heard that, yeah, the trunk or treat was very well received. There were a lot of vehicles.
Was it down at the park?
No, it was.
Just by the post office, it was on, on, like, Cindy's, Cindy's.
I've heard it was really, really good.
Really scary in the park.
Well, I think something like that, some kind of a community event down here at McMur, or Wharton Park, and that was really.
What was the zombie shoot down at McMurphy Park?
The zombie shoot was back here, at the gentleman's property.
Yeah, he did, that was really awesome.
Yeah, it was.
So, okay, I only have a few more things I see.
She goes on, if you're taking, if you put 2,000 now, where are you taking it from?
It's part of that 55,000 that we haven't spent yet.
They're using.
Yeah, that's, that's the tractor fund, would we throw that in there somewhere?
Not yet. I have, I have several line items yellow on here, and, I mean, there's the building, repair, maintain buildings and equipment. There's the, the special events, there's park improvements, road and street maintenance, tractor maintenance, facilities maintenance and repair, similar to the other one, the building one. But yeah, I mean, these are monies that we can allocate for.
Okay, and then I have the. Okay, and then I have the tractor. Street miscellaneous, fifty dollars. What is that, fifty dollars?
What would be that, stop signs? Miscellaneous.
Yeah, just, it's right before the facilities repair and make that, that I was just asking about.
We have not used it, I don't know what it was designated for, it was on there before. We don't want to take it out.
Well, I think, somebody, I think it was you, Joe, that told me about, when I first, my very first time doing this. All the numbers are just there. The bottom line is what's important.
Correct.
And then we can move them around, so just because we put something on this line for that, it, it just has to stay in the general fund. We can move all those around.
That's what I'm asking, what street miscellaneous.
Yeah, so it can be moved around, it's just the bottom line, and then throughout the year, as we need something, that's where we go, oh, well, that one's never been touched, and whatever that is, has never been touched, and so we can move it around. We can't switch from sewer fund or street, streets has streets, sewer has sewer, and then general is general.
You're correct.
Are they only the three?
Okay, so one more, we already talked about the sewer attorney fees, and those are up to three thousand, three seventy-five, so we don't know what's going to happen there, but the new sewer hookup engineering, it's like four thousand dollars. It, it doesn't cost four thousand dollars just for a sewer hookup for one?
It's exciting. I looked at that number. Because when I got the bill, I was like, wait a minute. But when you look at that number, what pays for that is the four thousand dollars that people pay to connect, and the side sewer permits. And so on the updated one, we have received thirteen thousand dollars to cover that cost. And what it's for is the, our engineer reviews all the plans from the people and says, yes, this works for our coder, no, it doesn't. We need to adjust this or that, and that's what we're paying for.
Well, this is why I'm asking though, it seems like an awful low figure, four thousand dollars.
We can adjust it.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
Because this guy's not cheap, I've seen his bills too, and so I'm sure he's not going to do just one sewer hookup next year.
Okay, we can adjust it.
This is an expenditure, so.
And, and I don't know if that's the updated amount or not.
Well, yeah, it's not quite, and I'm sure it probably isn't.
Where is?
I understand what you're saying.
Sewer hookups?
It should be on the last page.
Yeah, it still says four thousand on the, on the file that was just sent out. There is a question mark on it, I see, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Isn't that what goes out from the revenues though, and we, and the revenues are, what, thirteen thousand?
Yes, right.
Well, I was just curious because it's going to be an expenditure, and it says it's only four thousand, and that's what it costs for one sewer hookup.
But he doesn't charge that per review of that, he charges from three to, in one case, he had to do three reviews, so it was nine hundred dollars. But there's multiple ones of them.
Yeah, I know, I saw it through all those months, so.
So, yeah, so, so, right, we charge four thousand for someone to hook up to the sewer, that comes in as revenue. But we don't expend four thousand on one property to our engineer. So that, that remaining money goes into the sewer fund to, to, kind of like you're, you're, you're buying into the public utility with, with that fee. And that goes to general maintenance and things like that.
But Donna's right, I mean, I, we can definitely increase it. Because if we have more, then we don't have to do a budget amendment.
Well, I was just curious about it, because.
And actually, the question will be forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred? Why did it go up?
No, it, it's a sad, it's a whole thing. If you apply and have a sewer done, you pay forty-five hundred.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay.
So increase that to forty-five.
And the engineer will charge the city forty-five hundred. However, you just having one, just line item for four thousand doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, that's all I have.
Well, I've taken those ideas down, and Diane has them noted as well. As we get closer to the next, the next council meeting, we'll have updated numbers too, and then we can continue to put our extra funds into some of those other line items. And what we can do is we can highlight those particular line items that the council's interested in, and so, and you'll have them on your forums, and then we can tweet those numbers.
Yeah, we could spend fifty-five thousand pretty fast if we wanted to.
Well, if you start, yeah, if we start doing things like foundation, the roof, the tractor, it's gone. But that's great stuff that lasts a long time.
But is it going to make the community happy to see a new roof on this building?
Do you remember who built this building?
It'll make you happy. Oh, oh, God, let's put a new roof on this one.
I mean, it's three hundred years old, three hundred years old.
Dandy has something else that you want to talk about?
I do.
The sewer?
Yes.
The, the cons.
Right.
Wanted to give the floor to Diane, she wanted to talk about the sewer fund a little bit.
So we are looking at the future with the sewer, having a place, the new plant in place next year. And there are going to be some additional costs for that, and I, I added that on this new expenditure. It will cost more electricity to run the bigger plant, it will use more water than it's used before. The, and I was talking to Bill today to explain to me about the headworks. And the headworks is where the water comes into the plant, and there's a screen that catches.
Stuff, big stuff.
Garbage, basically. And we're going to have an automated one now. And so the screen will dump itself into a holding bin where hopefully solid waste will come in and pick it up when they pick up the garbage. So there's going to be a lot of expense for that.
Actor thing.
Yes, yes, like a little dumpster, so we'll have that to deal with. It's also going to take more man out to run the plant than it has before. And so it's going to cost more, and we can't use money from the general fund to fund the sewer.
No.
It has to pay for itself. And we also have budgets, excuse me, we have loan payments that are coming due, we have one coming up this next year. When we finish this four point eight million dollar project, half of it has been given to us as a forgivable loan, and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a grant. But the remaining part of that, which is two point, I think, three million dollars, something like that, we are going to have to pay for, it's a loan. So picking up that loan payment, we, Jill did this, and so I've been updating it. To be able to pick up that extra loan payment, we're going to have to increase our sewer rates. Now, she looked at one case, okay, what are you going to do, go from seventy, eighty, whatever you're at, and jump and start charging people two hundred and thirty dollars a month? A month, not a building cycle, to cover that loan payment, so. Instead of that, we looked at several options. Part of it is, I do believe we're going to need to increase our rates this year, not hugely, but we do need to increase the rates. Also, another way to generate more income to cover that cost is to increase the usage rate. Because there are a lot of people who go over the basic amount every month. We charge them sixty cents right now for every hundred gallons. If we increase that to sixty-nine cents every hundred gallons, you know, that would generate more money. Sewer connection fees, if we raise that from four thousand dollars to forty-five hundred dollars, that would help. The side sewer permit right now is five hundred, we could increase that to seven hundred and fifty dollars. The admin fee right now for a new account is twenty-five dollars, we could increase that to fifty dollars. There are ways that we can generate income, that's what I'm saying, we've got to generate income. We can't just keep raising the rates like crazy, so. Those are some ideas that I want you to think about, and we'll show you what that looks like. We also have money in savings that is part of the sewer reserve fund. We can draw from that that will offset some of our costs.
If you talked to him today, I remember, I don't know, it was probably a couple of years ago, when this first started, and he gave some awful ballpark figure, and that's what he said it was, that the base rate would probably wind up being like a hundred dollars a month, just the base rate. Do you think it's going to reach that for people? That's going to be horrible for the people in this community. But I'm not talking about this year, but.
Right, unless we can get some forgiveness of our loans through the state legislature is one thing we've talked about. Or we can draw down our sewer reserve fund, it will eventually, maybe in ten years, you know, increase like that. But we can't not take action because if we don't this year, last year you were slated to increase it about two dollars and you didn't. So now we have to make up for a little bit of that. We have to plan for our future, for the city, you know.
Well, it'd have to be paid for, I, it just, wow, that's, that's really hard.
What's the base rate right now?
It is forty-eight per month, and then tax on top of that, it ends up being one fifty-eight, twenty-six every two months.
So the, the properties that comes in to the general fund, but you can allocate it to the sewer fund.
You could.
The, the property taxes in twenty twenty-one, the revenue should really increase because all the property values have been almost doubled.
Yeah.
That's the report that I got this afternoon, which generated me to go up there.
There's a big source of money, I mean, my, my property's around seventy-eight thousand bucks.
Yeah.
You got it. That city's going to give a chunk of that.
Right. Now, how you've done that in the past is to just transfer a lump sum of money from the current fund to the sewer fund.
Right.
And, and you could do that, that's another option.
I suggest.
We, we have done that in previous.
So raising rates, the rates are already pretty high. We need, we need to cover that. I know some of you are not on it, so you haven't paid the forty-five hundred, so because it wasn't available. But those who are on, don't, shouldn't have to carry that burden.
Right, and we are going to pick up some new rate payers.
There's what, seven new assessments?
That makes, that's going to make a huge difference.
Yeah.
And that's going to add to it, so all those factors.
Some of us ended up on Septic, it doesn't matter whether we're paying or we're not.
No, I, I'm not picking on you on that, I'm just saying. It should go to the burden of people who paid, paid into it.
This is just going to be really bad for low-income people.
And you have categories for low-income people, they get a different rate.
I imagine that revenue, because the additional property tax revenue is going to be more than what you imagined.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I hope so.
When will we know that number?
So, so why did the, the tax, proposed tax, property tax number go down when you, when you updated it?
Because they sent a preliminary report to the law, and they sent a brand-new one this afternoon.
Yeah.
With adjusted dollar amounts on it.
Everybody I've talked to, the property, like, the taxes have gone almost close to double. Your, your value.
But, you know, but they haven't paid the tax on that.
Cindy, you heard something?
Not yet, but it's coming.
Well, the number she got today, it went down, and they based it on something, and I don't know if they're charging us more money or something, but somehow they based that lower number on something. Because we already sent out the assessments.
Right. Last week they gave us raw numbers, and this time they have state utility adjustments on there. And I apologize for being new in this process, and it's all, you know, coming to me piece at a time, but that's why it changed.
Right, but he said that it's got to be wrong, but that was today, right?
That was today. And in that sheet, Randy, it shows us the increase in property value, and it also shows us new property in town. I can show you those figures.
But it doesn't show us the taxes coming in, unlike the houses being built right now?
Not yet.
Yeah, so.
One state path, we ought to consider that.
Not jumped up yet.
Yeah.
Something's wrong with that number, I don't know.
So we keep looking at that, I'm just saying.
Well, the county mistake's not taking it off.
No, and the, and the, the factor that they're using this year is lower, I think I explained earlier about how when we set the budget into twenty twenty, we thought it was going to be the same as the one before.
Yeah.
But it changed last year, and this year it's that lower amount as well. Instead of two point thirty-nine, it's like two point oh one or oh nine, something like that, so that dropped a lot, so.
When will we actually know the real amount we're going to get to the property tax?
We, we evaluate the numbers they send us, and then we say, this is what we want you to assess. We can increase the property taxes up to six point seven percent if we want it. Right now, we're just talking about, this is what they're saying, this is with no increase or anything.
Right.
Right.
But we, do we actually know what the number's going to be?
They can't predict.
So they can just do it.
When will we know that number?
I guess it, I mean, we have to see the taxes for that.
Well, we decide that number.
January, wouldn't it?
If we don't tell them, say, we want you to collect this amount, they're going to default and only collect what we got last year.
Well, that's the property tax, I think what Randy's talking about is.
I'm not talking about.
What you want to know is what we're really going to get, as in coming from.
Without an increase.
Right, and they're giving us, just like we're making estimates for next year, they're giving us estimates as well. And so they're giving us an estimate that's lower than previous.
It's an estimate.
It's an estimate, there, I think, there was, there's, there's some talk that folks are not going to be able to pay their property taxes in the coming year because of job losses this year.
Actually.
And, and things like that, but they really don't know, right? They're taking a guess at how many people might not pay their taxes.
I see.
So there's things like that.
They can increase it, but it'll be more than just not paying.
Right, I mean, and then, once again, they're, they're guessing.
So we don't know.
At this point, we're, we're making their best, our best guess off their best guess.
I think, I think they're lowballing, I think their guess is lowballing.
And I would, and I would imagine that if they were going to give us a guess, an estimate, I would, I would think that they would.
They're lowballing.
I would think that they would, right, they'd be as conservative as possible. And so that, that way, our budgets will be as conservative as possible to keep cities from getting into trouble.
Right. And the other part of the property taxes, we talked about putting seventy-five percent into the general fund and twenty-five on the streets instead of seventy-eight and twenty-two, because we need to bolster the street balance.
And that's just a, a, a shifting, right, so when, when we get money from the state, we're, instead of putting, you know, because we have our, our different funds, right? Instead of putting, we're going to put slightly more into the, into street fund than we have in previous years.
Right.
Just to help our street fund out.
You need it.
Do you know when Spence, since the German auto is up here, do you know when that might open?
No, they're still working on some issues with county and.
Oh, we want to drive down the road.
To get in that?
Yeah.
It's pretty muddy.
So, but he still has some work to, work to do. I'm, I'm, I can't, I can't speak to his business plan.
I was just wondering when we might see some sales tax out of that.
I don't even know if he still has the same plan he used to have, so. So whatever, what became of his tower?
Um, I. Excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah, it was basically, it was granted, because it was already there, and, you know, they want to get on with the process. It's, it's part of the process.
So he got a walk, huh?
I guess, yeah.
Well, there were, this is way off topic.
A lot of fees.
There, there were, there were, there were building without a permit fees, there were all kinds of things, there was a very substantial.
He did.
For those people in town who have suffered for things like that.
Very substantial penalties. Okay, so we were talking about the budget, we talked about the sewer, and then, and you'll have those numbers for council here coming up.
Right.
With some suggestions on, on fees and stuff. I don't, I can't, I mean, we've, we've raised, over the years, we've raised the base rate before, I don't remember ever changing the overage fee before.
I know.
I mean, and that's a, that's a, a great way to, to do it, right? So, and that's, so the, the folks that are, are staying within the, you know, within their means as far as water aren't, aren't going to be affected, but those that go over could, could be.
Now, Donna brought up something about the senior citizens having set income. Um, we, we use a measurement that taken off the poverty level that the, the, you, I promise, the US government gives us every year. And there are three levels within the poverty level, and so ours is set on the very low income. So unless the person has this low, low income, they don't get the discount. The county bases it on the middle. The county bases it on the middle income of the poverty level. And so more people are getting senior discounts on water than they are on sewer because of the way we set it up. We have the option of changing that.
I thought we matched.
No, we're so, we're so low that I think there was only like one or two people qualified for that here.
We have about, we have about six people right now. But I think, if I remember correctly, the income is like eleven thousand or.
Yeah, it's.
It went up to fourteen, I think, this last year or something.
Thirteen something.
Yeah, for one person now, so, two, it's like twenty-three or something. Extremely low.
You gotta be eating dirt.
So we can, we can make those adjustments if you want to do that. I mean, we can look at what would it cost if, you know, six more people qualified for senior low income instead of paying the regular rate. We can check all those things out.
But then to cover that, we'd have to raise the rate save everybody else.
It's balancing out.
Yeah, it's balancing.
Well, you know, I mean, how.
So to help people.
Could you at least figure it out and see what the, what the difference is that we go to at least the middle one?
Yeah, we can do that. After the fee schedule, we've been going over that and looking at what true costs are to the city and what we bill people. For example, we bill people eighty dollars for an inspection. It costs the city a hundred and fifty dollars every time an inspection is done because we have to pay mileage and, and the, the time from here and there, not just the actual inspection, so we need to make some adjustments there.
We have a preliminary fee schedule already with some proposed numbers in it and when it's ready, it'll come to council. It'll be a resolution at the council after.
The planning committee, right?
Yeah, the planning committee's analyzing some of that too, but, so Stephanie and Diane, so, but council will have final say on, on those fees. And that'll help out too. Any more discussion on the budget tonight? This will be again on our next council meeting as well?
I don't have any.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else?
Anything was good, good discussion.
Okay, no, we, yeah, we get information.
Get, get information.
Okay, uh, hearing no other, um, business on item number two, the budget discussion. Uh, moving on to item number three. Council to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen amending stock work order requirement. So you should have that ordinance, and if you had read through all of the where-ases, you can get the history on, on where this came from. Whereas the city recently discovered that section nineteen oh one oh sixty inadvertently was amended back in twenty sixteen to add, excuse me, inapplicable standards into the stock work order. And that, uh, the mistake wasn't caught in twenty seventeen until, until now. And so the difference, if you wanted to know how this is different than our current, current one, the, it is exactly the same except, um, line, on a line B, where it says, "The stock work order shall include the information required for a notice of violation." That's, that sentence changed. It's changed to add under VMC nineteen oh one oh forty B one through six. So the, so our code is exactly the same except it adds, um, that one, it points to the location of the information for the stop work order. So it's a, did I do a very good job of explaining that?
No, and I still don't get it. What is the point?
So what are the, what, what does that spell?
So that already exists.
But we just, you're asking us to adopt that.
Right, so all it does, all this, the language is exactly the same except it adds under VMC nineteen oh one oh forty.
But what's that?
That is not changing, but it is this information right here, if you'd like to see. This is, I printed it out for you all, if you hadn't looked at it on your own already.
I looked at, but I can't, on my computer, I can't print out when I get on the site. You know, where it goes to each section and you can print each section.
Yeah.
It won't print.
Really, that's how I did, uh, did this one, there's like, um, it's like, there's like a little Word document button that you can click. Above, above each section, there's a whole bunch of little icons on the right-hand side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of little icons and there are different options for printing it out. And one of them, if you click on it, it'll make a Microsoft Word document of just that section and you can print that out.
I have a map.
Which is what, which is what this, this is from.
Okay, well, I'll try one of the other ones.
But, um, but anyway, yeah, so what that is, so what, what this ordinance does is just add the location of the stock work order information. It doesn't actually change what's on the stock work order, it's just saying it's located here. So it's a very, very.
That's what this is about, where the location of the stock work order goes?
So that yellow information.
Yeah, I can have it right here.
Yeah, this is, that yellow spot is what's different from our current information until that one.
That is it, just where it goes.
That's the whole change. It's just telling you where that information is at. And that information isn't actually changed.
So it actually really isn't a change?
Well, it is a change, it, it is an amendment to our court ordinance, but it's just saying where that information is located at. I know it's a, it seems like a lot of work for nothing, but it's important.
Well, I'll make a, a motion that we, that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirteen.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seceded by Mr. Parsons. Further discussions? Again, if there's any questions, I have both the ordinance.
That's a dangerous ordinance. Twenty twenty and thirteen, that's like Friday the thirteenth on twenty twenty.
Diane numbered it.
I hope it was born on Friday the thirteenth.
We should have skipped that number.
Is there a discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, all those in favor of, of adopting ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen amending the stock work order requirements, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, council to consider, item number four on city business, council to consider moving the November twenty-sixth Thanksgiving council meeting to, um, a regular council meeting to December third. Basically, we'd be just voting on moving our council meeting from Thanksgiving to December third. Uh, it's Thursday.
And that's when we have the public hearing.
It's the first Thursday of the month instead of the second Thursday. And so the idea is that we'd have a council meeting the first Thursday and we'd also have a council meeting the second Thursday, so we'd have back-to-back council meetings. And then that second council meeting would be the last one of the year. But if we are going to remove our regular council meeting date, we do need to vote on that.
I'll make the motion that we move the November twenty-sixth regular council meeting to December third.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to move the November twenty-sixth council meeting to December third. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Love Lady.
There you go.
There we go, I'm on you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving the council meeting from November twenty-sixth to December third, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy your Thanksgiving, everyone.
Oh yeah, we can work.
What, council, Inslee Council Thanksgiving?
Yeah, no gatherings on Thanksgiving. Good luck with that.
Well, they're just asking people not to, you know, that people are dying everywhere and it's going up and up and up and up, so they're just asking people not to gather, but if people wanna be stupid and go ahead and gather, go ahead and kill somebody.
Okay, moving on. City business, item number five. Uh, council to consider counseling the December fourth Christmas Eve council meeting. So this is in the, in the, in the same idea as that.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the council meeting on December twenty-fourth.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to cancel our December twenty-fourth council, regular council meeting, do we have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Mr. Parsons, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that is the end of city business. Public comment? Ms. Radcliffe. Excuse me? Oh, well, you can stand right there and speak or just speak right there, it's, you know, moving through the car.
Um, I'm concerned about that, can I take this off? Oh no, wait, hang on. I'm concerned about that house on B Street. I don't care about last few people, it's a historic home. We've got like eight or nine left. And every time I look out my window, I see it's getting exposed. You can't be happy driving down B Street and seeing that that house is being wet. You can blame it on the owner, you can blame it on you people, I really don't care. But we've gotta do something to come together to make sure that this house, it's one of our historic buildings. And yes, people do care about those. We have very few left, we're one of the few towns in this area that actually has those types of Victorian-era buildings. And whoever's at fault, and it's probably both of you, honestly, I, I don't really care, but calm heads need to get together and come to some resolution. Putting fines, daily fines of a thousand dollars on that building, that's not gonna work, didn't work before, hasn't worked down. Any property that you've done that to in this town, you've gotta come to some kind of agreement that we want to preserve our history. And I, I understand both sides, I, I don't understand why she's being singled out, I mean, for heaven's sakes. You're the code enforcement, you said that on Facebook, that's your job, enforce codes. Matt Allison is dumping raw sewage in the back of his yard, nobody's, I'm going after him. We've got Ray Field, I mean, I've never seen that one.
Please come tell us that he's doing that.
Oh, I did, I told Matt, I'm on.
I don't hang out at his house.
No, well, I met Matt. I told Mike, you know, I've told others, it was on Facebook for God's sake. You know, Ray Field, that hot mess is now spreading across the street. Quonset House, still a mess, the people's house, still burnout, the, the old burnout house on E Street. I mean, we've got other things that we need to enforce and they're not being enforced. And yet, we're, we're dying on a sword about a roof and, and people's homes are the biggest expenditure usually of their entire life. And it, it should be at some point protected. And, you know, it's gone too far and now we're in the middle of winter. And all, all that seems to be happening is a twelve thousand dollar month, uh, day fine. Thirty thousand dollars in a month would go on that house. And, you know, pride comes before the fall. Somebody has to get together and have some calm heads, get the stupid attorneys out of it, because they're the only ones making money on this, is the attorneys. Everybody else is losing money. You know, the city's losing money. So I don't know what it's gonna take, but somehow get all the liars in the same room and talk it out. And, and somehow save that house from the rainy weather, water's the worst thing that can happen to any building. And everybody knows it, maybe that's your goal, I don't know, maybe you want the thing to fall into itself. But if it is, shame on you. And if you're not working toward fixing it or helping the person to fix it, then you're part of the problem. And my house is old too, I removed my chimney, my dad removed his chimney, Jones removed their chimney, Johnson's removed their chimney, put a roof over top of it. Anybody's built a house knows that there's a chase when you put in a chimney, it doesn't destroy the structure if you remove it. So come on, people. Work together and figure out how we can at least get a roof on it so it's protected. And I don't know what that's gonna take, but somehow you've gotta work it out. And, you know, Joe, I have a lot of faith in you, the hot, the hot mess we had before you, not at all. But you're calm and, and you're a, a kind person. You can just tell that by the things that you say. So I know that, I just can't believe that you want that to be permanent. And I just, I have a lot of faith that you can work this out and I hope you do.
Thank you, I can't speak too much of it, there is, there is, there's an appeal in, in process. Um, I can say that I, I do have, I feel the same way about that property personally, is that, that, that it is a, a city treasure and that, um, I'm looking forward to seeing it fixed up and, and maintained properly.
Also.
Other public comment? Vicki?
Yeah, I, I agree that it should be, it should be saved. The inside of that place, the work that's been done to restore the inside and make it beautiful is for naught because all the water has just destroyed. The majority of the work that's been done on the inside. And, and it was, it could have been done and taken care of and had the roof on there and, and not, not had that leakage had the stock work order not been put in place when it was. Just ridiculous. For somebody to put a lot of their effort and their time and their own money into doing things for this city and being treated that way.
That don't give you a pass.
She's not the only one that didn't have two incentives on her left, so you just need to let her talk.
I am appalled, I'm, I'm appalled that, that she's treated that way. I don't know who's responsible or who, you know, who started all this crap, but it does need to be solved. And I would think that out of the goodness of people's hearts that they would consider removing that, that work order because, that stock work order because it, it's gonna, it's gonna ruin the house, it's just gonna ruin the house, the weather, the, you know, it's horrible. And it is, it was meant to be a, like eye candy for the town, when you come in, you know, you go, oh wow, look at that old house. They restored that and really made it nice. And now here's the stuff, you know, flapping in the wind and, and it's just horrible, it's horrible to see, it's very sad. So, you know, I, I'm sure not gonna redo my roof, I can tell you that. And I'm shocked at, at the response that people give people in this town, it's just, just unreal. I mean, they, they don't welcome your help or welcome your work or, you know, the things that you do for other people. It seems like they're there to step on you every step of the way, you know, and screw you over if they can, so. Over little stuff and then pretty soon it gets into big stuff. And man, you're just, you know, you can't, you can't fight City Hall, well, I guess not. Because if that's the way City Hall is, if it was me, I'd be moving the hell out of here. I'd take my, take my good intentions and my good work and my good feelings to somewhere else that appreciates them because I can see this town sure doesn't. So, that's it, and I didn't hear what you said, but whatever it is, it doesn't matter to me.
Thank you for that, any other public comment? Elected official comment?
I have a comment, as usual. So, um, I'm looking here at the attorney bill. And I wanna know what the REIT issue is.
The which, the which issue?
The REIT issue, review REIT issue, what, what is that about?
It was a question that we, that we had about.
Oh, the budget process.
How the budget was set up and what the RCs W say.
Okay.
Compared to how we do it.
Okay. And so, this bill is ludicrous. The with honor is even more than.
You can see the, the vast majority of that is code enforcement related.
Yeah, nineteen hundred and fifty dollars. And before that, it was sixteen hundred, so, and for the, how many years have you been doing this? How much money do you think is put into this little? How much money do you think is put into this little thing that's going on here? I also have another question. This interfund loan for code enforcement for three thousand dollars?
That was, that should have been the one that we, that was paid off already, right? That was, the interfund loan was the one, yeah.
This is for, for code enforcement?
It was from 2017.
This is the one that finally got paid off?
This is the one Cindy was mentioning earlier.
Yeah. Oh, oh, this is the one that was with the house?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the attorney fees? Yeah.
Yeah, that got closed out this year.
Yeah, yeah, Judy paid it off. Okay.
Any other public official comment or, excuse me, elected official comment?
Ju, yeah, Ju. The person that bought that house paid it off and they knew that that loan was taken out because during an executive session, that was all talked about and planned on. And that same person voted on that to make those things, to do exactly what we did on that house. She voted on that and now all of a sudden, we're the evil ones because she... We laid it all out. We're going to take this loan from this and we're going to use that for the fees and we're going to put our penalties on it. And by the time all the penalties are done, we'll be able to pay back that loan and pay everything off.
I'm talking about the loan from the super fund that was...
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Seven thousand dollars or something?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
And that's how the loan got paid off because the payments weren't made on it over the years like it was supposed to have been done. That's what was left. So that was Judy's fine. So Judy paid the loan off. You can word it any way you want to, but that's basically what happened.
Okay, but when, when she voted on doing that, she voted on charging herself that money because that's the way the whole plan was set up, was to use that money to put on that house. When all the fees come on, on that house, we focused on the one project. When all the fees come up on that one project, that'll pay back this loan. Does everybody agree? Yes, we all agree. Perfect. And then she quits, goes and buys the house and then complains that there's all these fees on it.
How did she know that she was going to have to, in order to get her house released from you guys? That's when she...
Because when she was, because when she was on city council, that's what we all agreed to do.
Well, I don't think she probably realized at the time that she would be the one paying the loan off. And anyway, that's how she got her house and she had every right to get the house. She bought it fair and square.
Yeah, that's great.
And then...
But those fees that you were talking about, I think you were talking about, so we have collected on those fees.
And she should.
As we should and it should pay back. I think the only problem we're doing is we're too soft on all these fees. I think that if the person gets the fees and we get it on there, everything's legal and they want to fight it in court, that's fine. We'll go fight it in court. But whenever we win the case, and if we win or if we don't, if we win the case, then that money, whatever it is, is going to go back into that project. And so it should pay for itself. And that's what those fees are for. And we can wipe fees off, um, but we need to be able to pay for this stuff. So...
Well, um, maybe sometimes there should be, take a step back. But most people in town, um, well, on roofing things, um, I've got all the permits that have been issued for the last three years and I've never seen anything like what's going on with Costello's house.
I don't know. I do not know anything about what's going on with Costello's house. What are you laughing at?
Okay, because I know better.
No, what are you laughing at?
I don't believe you.
I don't follow. Do you know anything that's going on with this? We've made the rules. We've made the rules.
We'll talk to you about it.
Well, yeah, we've talked from what I've heard and what I've seen on Facebook. But we've made up the rules. Joe's supposed to take care of them and Diane's supposed to take care of them and follow those rules. I have no idea what's going on. I've heard rumors from Facebook and from other people, but I don't know what it is. And unless there's a rule that needs to be changed and it comes before the city council, I could care less.
Well, we've got to be fair and equitable too. If we've got other people held at this standard, we can't hold people at this standard.
I 100% agree.
It's got to be fair and equitable. So if we're not making, um, German Otto tear down that building that he already built without a permit, then we shouldn't be helping people tear off shingles so they can look at sheeting. You can check sheeting nailing from underneath. You don't have to tear it off in order to see the nailing. So, I mean, there's other ways of doing it. And, and I know you don't like this idea, but a qualified person who's experienced in the building knows you can look at the sheeting nailing from underneath.
And was, are, are we, I don't know where the limit is, but was that ever offered?
Can we then discuss this?
I, I don't feel comfortable discussing this right now because there is an appeal in process and the, the hearing is coming up very soon. And I am not, I wish I could say lots of things, honestly.
Just be fair and equitable. That's all we're asking.
But I'd rather not because it could put the, the city in, in legal jeopardy.
I'm going to make a comment about all of it. Uh, there needs to be a level playing field in this community.
That's the other thing. You've got to watch what you say when you're up here. I can't say a comment about, none of us can say comments because there was attorneys that were hired and now...
This is the comment I'm making.
And you're supposed to be...
A comment about the whole community. Everybody needs to be treated the same.
Of course.
That does not happen in this community and I'm saying that from years of watching it happen. I'm not talking about anything specific. There is not a level playing field in this community. It ain't who you are, it's who you know. So, I'm done.
Elected official comment? Anyone else?
I'm good.
All right, hearing none. This council meeting is adjourned at 7:57 PM. Good night, everybody.